Okay, I'll wake up Sheriff. We have a nine o'clock with the sheriffs to go over some topics. One is the D I S security camera and the price for that. And the nine one one system that's been talked about before to be replaced. So, Mr. Sheriff.
So, D I S, we had them come in and redo. Give us a quote of every camera that the sheriff's office is in charge of, plus your hallway cameras that you guys wanted to replace to watch the hallways and the entryway. And then the locked doors, the two outside door on the side here and this inside door. And then the evidence room to be card swiped instead of keys. That way, we can just deactivate. We don't have to chase people down for keys if they leave or whatever.
So, the sheriff deputies would have a key card for which doors again? Their side one by the jail?
This inside one here too.
And that one in there.
And then three of us would have the evidence room.
Oh, okay.
Me, Wayne, and probably the sergeant. And then, yeah, and then that's, and then we would, D I S, we would just call them when we'd have a, we'd have like a hundred of them in a box. And then, I think they're just those little black fob ones. We'd call them up, read them the number, tell them which doors we want, how long we want it for. So, that way, like if we have a repairman, we can say, let him in door A for 24 hours.
Right.
That way, we don't have to stand there. Let him out, he can just come and go.
Right.
You know, or if we have a task force that's working for the day. So, and then every camera, including all the cameras in the Sallyport around the building out here, and then all the cameras inside, and then adding a couple cameras in the day rooms, because that's what the feds want. That came to 29,000 and change. And we don't have to actually take an action item on this today. Twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars, because we're kind of waiting to see, again, if I get that federal, if we get that federal, the one contract, they say they're, they'll pay, help pay for improvements. So, that might help.
All that US Marshal one?
Cover, yeah, that.
They might pay for those cameras.
Yeah, or at least help, or cut it in half, maybe.
Yeah.
So, it isn't crucial that we act on this right now. I mean, I'd love to get the door going apart, because I'd love to get those doors switched over. But I'm well away, because I think we just met with the feds yesterday about the pharmacy. And that got checked off on how we're going to get their drugs. And so, we expect to start getting federal prisoners here at the end of the month or so, so.
We don't have a staff.
Well.
We've got four guys.
No, we've got, we've got five. And then, we're interviewing one this week.
Who switched over?
Nobody's switched over. We, we had a staff of six, and the one left.
I thought we were down to four.
No, we're down to five. We want six, and then you guys gave me that seventh position. But then, we moved the seventh over to dispatch, I guess.
Temporarily, yeah.
That's right. Well, now, we needed to go back over to jail. Anyways, so then, we'll be at full staff. We have five right now.
And trained staff.
Well, it's on my head, so I think we can, I think we can handle it. And we're interviewing Thursday.
Are there some academies lined up for some of the detention?
We'll put their names, and we're just waiting to hear.
Do you know, have you seen their calendar, like when are they having?
I haven't looked at it. And then Christina is scheduled, is supposed to be scheduled to go to Missoula for their entry level, a school for their new hires. So, that'll be a week.
Oh, okay.
So, she'll go over there.
Missoula County has a school for entry level?
When they hire somebody, they make them go through like a four day.
Oh, well, that's a good idea.
Thing, right. So, they said she could go into that. She'd be Taser trained and all that stuff, so. But then, we're interviewing on Thursday, but we're not supposed to talk about anything, so. Yeah, move along.
I do, I just want to clarify though, that you'll get on the agenda next week to get permission for that.
To move the seventh one back, I guess, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
So, has all the other issues been addressed in the jail that needs to be addressed?
The only thing that is, we want to put, you know, the feds want us to have cameras in there, and they want us to get that one system. But we're, again, we're waiting to see how much money they're getting.
Well, I mean, about the other incident that happened, is that being addressed? So, it doesn't happen again?
What other incident?
The death on the jail.
Oh, we can't, that's, we've been ruled that it wasn't our fault, obviously. They're going to do a, uh, we're waiting to see if Ellen's going to do a corner inquest or not on that.
But, I mean, so that it doesn't happen again, I mean, there's.
We can't stop it from, I mean, he did what, he checked on him when he put him to bed.
No, I know, but I mean.
They got sheets, we can't stop it if it happens.
But where did they tie the sheet to?
The bunk above, and there's no way to fix it. We have to have bunk beds, or we wouldn't be able to house anybody.
I thought that we had.
There's holes in them for vents. We can do a tour at some point, show you.
Does Missoula County have the same kind of bed, really?
We can only do so much. The only way we'd stop it is take out the bunk beds, and then you only got, now you cut us in half.
Bed, yeah.
Yeah, so, and then.
Do they, I know it's off topic, do they write a report? Like, is there like a report of that summation of whoever?
Yeah, and they gave it to Missoula, and then Missoula's did the investigation and all that.
Okay.
And then, they turned that investigation over to Ellen.
Okay.
So, and we just did a press release on that.
Okay.
The ruling on that. And then Ellen's just deciding if it meets the requirement for a corner inquest or not.
All right.
So, the D I S is twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars. So, we'll see what the marshals say, if they're going to do that or not. And then, the next is the nine one one system, finally. Lumen is the one that we have now. It's a company we work with. I think we have a working relationship with them. Their system seems to be better. It's, the first year, if you go to the red tab section, is a hundred and seventy-one thousand. But then, year two for support and everything, and every year after year one is nineteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollars. Every year.
To maintain a new, up-to-date.
I guess.
Stay of the art nine one one, huh?
Yeah, that's what they see here, they got it all spelled out.
Is that comparable to, have you talked to any other sheriffs or counties to see?
Yeah, and they gave us a pretty decent discount on the one to get us down to the one.
For the initial year?
To the one seventy-one, yeah. Because originally, they were over two hundred thousand.
And so, all this includes equipment and labor and installation?
Yep. With some extra add-ons that we had chosen. The mapping and that, because we had to go to a new mapping system. Because the one they have is obsolete, and they don't, they're, what do they call that? They're sunset stage where they're not going to do updates to it anymore than that, so. That Matt Pierce, mapping guy that maps, that drives around and maps everything, his, we made sure that his system works with this, their system, and it does.
And this current one we have, that's the one that's been outdated for so long, they don't even have patches or work or parts for it anymore.
It's really hard for them to find them, and that's where they're charging us a hundred and fifteen hour in that, to work on it. Yeah, in any minute, you know, so. So, you know, they've, they've been.
And if it goes down and somebody can't be lo, I remember somebody sued police department when their kid was in a, trapped in a minivan or whatever, he was trying to call nine one one, and they.
Yeah, I suppose we would be in trouble if we knew that it was obsolete, we didn't fix it. But, you know, originally, we thought it was going to be around one ninety-four, so.
So, one seventy-one, they came down.
Came down.
And this was coming out of that COVID money?
Well, lucky we have a COVID money, because we wouldn't be able to get our systems up to speed without it.
Right.
So, the two forty-seven is what, on the next page?
That's what, that twenty thousand dollar.
Added up.
Yearly.
Annual, the annual.
Five-year.
That's a five-year?
Five-year, yeah.
Miscellaneous fees of twenty-six thousand.
Yeah, then they.
You think something?
Well, they discounted that. That's a negative sign in front of that one.
Oh, okay. All right, it is, yes. Thank God.
Yeah.
And I remember, what was the name of the other outfit that submitted one? And we only had one other proposal.
Univision.
That's right.
But these guys have all their equipment here already, they ran all the cables already, you know. We get another company in here, they're going to have to strip everything out, put all their stuff in. We don't know how good their work, their IT is. These guys have been able to come fix even the ones that, the one we have now, they're able to always get it fixed when we do need it fixed. They're very, from what little contact I've had with them, they've been really good and.
Because this is the one that used to be here before, when they were called Century Link.
Century Link.
Now, they're new.
And then, they came in and met with you guys. And the one dude's like, I laid all the cable in here, you know, yeah. So. And they're the ones that brought it to our attention that we're, well, it was their system too, but that we're updating.
Well.
This would give us new monitors and stuff in dispatch and all kinds of stuff, I guess.
Well, since public safety is not a luxury, it's a mandate from the state and the fed.
Right.
Anybody watched the Chauvin trial on TV, you see where they really expect law enforcement to have.
All the answers.
Yep. And expect them to be able to track and ping and camera and video and know everything.
Can be a crazy world.
Yep. If we keep going on this antiquated system, eventually, it's not even going to.
Well, could you imagine that in court?
Yeah.
We're lucky that it hasn't happened yet.
Yeah.
We really are.
Well, that one time it did, and.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And we missed what, a couple called, but they weren't serious enough to.
Right.
Fall back on you.
Right. Then, the scary thing is, the next thing is, we're going to have to work on it's radios, which, they're working, just we can't get up to Thompson Peak right now.
Still too much snow, huh?
That's what I've been told. And we got to get with Verizon.
What's that, what's too much snow?
Up to Thompson Peak to the radios? Somebody said we can't get up to deputies. Deputies didn't think we could get up there.
That Verizon or somebody had already been up there.
Oh.
Now, there's none.
Maybe we'll take a drive up, see how far we can get. But we got to get with Verizon.
Take that rig with dent in it.
Yeah. Trust me.
Take one of those stumblebells out of the fire hall.
There you go.
You go.
Well, we do have a side-by-side that's ours on the other side of the fire hall. I guess that's where they store that.
Four-wheel drive.
Take that up there.
Okay.
So, yeah, so, I don't know, I recommend go with this one. I know, I was a little shocked with the twenty thousand a year. I asked Ronnie. Ronnie says that we used to pay like fifteen thousand or something a year.
With the old system?
With the old system, so, I mean, this is probably with inflation or.
It's in the ballpark of what we've been doing historically.
Right, because I was like, really, you pay that every, and she's like, yeah, for maintenance, and so. Because I thought it was weird. But she said no, she thought that was about right, so, for what that's worth.
That's worth something.
Yeah. I'm just confirming that they weren't.
Yeah, they weren't sticking by on two thousand a year.
Right, gouging me, because I was like, shouldn't this be cheaper or something? But she said no, so. So, I don't know, so to you guys.
It's definitely something we need to get updated.
Yeah.
Before, before we get to. Gets us in trouble, so.
Yeah. So, we can at least save a little on the one ninety-four, get one seventy-one, and then we still have a little, obviously, gives us a little extra money. If the marshals don't move, then we can get something like that and that wrist bending or whatever down the road. We can let it settle and see where we're at.
Okay. Anybody have a?
I'll make a motion that we approve the new nine one, new nine one one system through Lumen, and how you say it.
Yeah.
I would second that motion.
Motion is second. Any other questions, concern, or discussion on moving ahead with the contract with Lumen's for the nine one one system? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any none, okay?
Do we need to add that it's been taken out of the COVID money that we've, I don't know if we needed to add in there or not, so.
And when, when will they start all this?
Well, you know, it's probably going to be thirty days or more, I assume.
Okay.
From to get all the equipment ordered and.
Oh, we'll follow up in the notes, just so that it's in the minutes that this is being funded and paid for entirely, well, the initial year anyway, is being paid for out of the COVID money that the sheriff has applied for and received to be spent within his department. So, this funding is taken care of by that. We already checked it, it meets, meets the spending requirements of the COVID money earned by the sheriff and can only be spent by the sheriff, so this is needed and this is necessary, so.
And there need to make that clear, because there's been.
Yeah, people think it was spending general fund money or something. All right, is that it, Mr. Sheriff?
That's it that I'm allowed to talk about.
Okay. All right, well, this concludes the three items on the sheriff's agenda. Okay, we are starting our ten o'clock meeting, which is with the Mako Property Casualty Insurance people. Shan, John McGree and Shannon.
Chamberlain.
Chamberlain, that's right. Shannon Chamberlain from Mako, and John McGree. You're actually kind of a representative for.
Paint West.
Paint in my west.
Paint in your west, exactly.
All right, so whoever wants to take her away.
I'm going to let Shannon just go to it, absolutely.
All right, so, we're going to renew or review the renewal for the Property and Casualty Trust for two thousand twenty-one to twenty-two, which is effective July first. On the first page is just your agenda, and item number one is the excess and reinsurance market analysis. As you're aware, we're living in a crazy world right now, and definitely experiencing a hardening insurance market. I, I don't really want to say hardening, I feel like it's already hard. So, it's not, I just hope it doesn't get any worse. So, we were fortunate to not have near as challenging of a renewal this year as we did last year. So, last year, the average for the pools increase was about twenty-five percent. And that was just because we were hit from every angle between really high lawsuits that weren't expected and really high increases in our excess and reinsurance premiums. So, this year was a little bit better. The average for the pools increase is about eleven percent. Still not what I'd like to come here and say every year, but given the circumstances of the world, I think it's the best we could do this year, so. Claims analysis, we're still continuing to see, of course, law enforcement claims liability seems to be our highest leader there. And then, on the property side is wind and hail, so. Surprisingly, that is not just in the eastern part of the state like everybody thinks. We had a really large hail claim, wind and hail storm that went through last year that started in Beaverhead County, went all the way to Billings. And then, just in July or February, or January or February, we had a big windstorm that started in Sanders County and went all the way to Sheraton County, so clear across the state. So, nothing we could do about those. Just trying to take care, you know, negotiate with the excess carriers as much as we can, so. The liability, we, we did see a ten percent increase to the base rate for all counties. So, how that works is every county has a base rate per employee count, and that's how it, the liability premium is calculated. And then, there's also a three-year experience modification. So, it'll look at individual counties. So, Mineral Counties lost history for three years on liability claims. And so, if you have higher claims than the rest of the group, you're obviously going to pay a little bit more. And, you know, the other side too. So, the property side, we do have some changes in our property program. Historically, we've been self-insured for a hundred thousand dollars, which was, and that was moved to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars last year for wind and hail claims. We have always had excess insurance. So, that means that whoever was our excess carrier, we were following their property form. And sometimes, the same carrier would change their form on us during, you know, in the, at the renewal. Sometimes, we would have a partnership with somebody like the Hartford, who we thought was a great relationship, and then, all of a sudden, they decided to increase our retention to a million dollars and triple our rate a few years ago. So, that was their way of nicely non-renewing us. That's when we moved to Travelers. So, this year, we've spent the last year writing our own property policy. So, we have kind of a manuscriptated property form like we do the liability. So, that changes things a little bit. We're no longer having excess insurance, we have reinsurance. So, it'll be better for us in the long run, give us more options as far as, you know, cookie cutter policies are not the same for Montana, you know, as they are for Louisiana. Or, you know, there's different, different property exposures there. So, we are doing a shared and layered program on that. So, what that means is, after the hundred thousand dollars, instead of just one carrier taking the rest up to the three hundred million aggregate, there are a number of county, or a number of carriers who are taking bits and pieces of that. And one of the benefits of that in the future is if this, if the Hartford is, has a corner of this, and they decide they don't want to be in the public entity business anymore, then they leave, and we just fill that with another carrier, rather than starting a whole program over and new policy forms and all that. So, it'll be a little easier in the future. The boiler and machinery, we did see a slight increase in that. I should say on the property, the vehicles and equipment rates stayed the same, so we don't have any increases in those. But we did unfortunately have a twenty percent increase in the buildings and contents rate. And the reason for that is, you know, the actuary has been looking at this every year, and that's where we're seeing continuously that we're not collecting enough premium to cover the losses on the buildings and contents. So, flat rate on vehicles and equipment, and the boiler and machinery did see a twenty percent increase. The, or the buildings and contents. The boiler machinery was a slight increase, but not really enough to that individual county.
I'm seeing what you're talking about with buildings and content. Where's the boiler machinery? Are you looking?
Oh, I'm still on the first page, you're just talking on this first thing in there, sorry.
No, we were on page three.
Oh, oh, the very, very, oh.
And then, fidelity and crime, that is, you know, your embezzlement, your fraud and crime, those types of things. We are in our second year of a three-year, of a three-year policy. So, the good thing about those three-year policies is they, they won't change the premium in that three years. So, this is our second year, is July first, so that premium stayed the same. And then, the cyber liability has been very, very challenging. And a lot of it has to do with being a public entity. There's carriers that are moving away from insuring public entities on the cyber liability side. And then, there's also just the increase in all of the fraud and hacking and scams and those types of things. So, we'll talk about the changes to that as we get through the packet. There was no increase in the premium for that, but there was a decrease in other limits and coverage, so. Okay, now you can turn to the second page.
Well, I didn't see what you were talking about, except I did on the second page, I saw where it said that, or actually, it was the third page where it talks about equipment, buildings, contents, T I V, so that's why I got ahead. I couldn't see that, but now I do.
Okay, so, on the second page, this is the five-year loss history of the entire pool. The top is the liability, the bottom is the property. So, you can see the liability side, we've been struggling with claims. So, the incurred liability losses, those are the amounts that the pool is paying out. So, that is within our retention levels. The liability, we're self-insured up to five hundred thousand dollars. We have a five hundred thousand dollar corridor deductible, and then, after that, Brett is still the reinsurer, and they pick up the rest of it. Unfortunately, that two thousand eighteen, nineteen year is what's killing us. Those were the two very large wrongful incarceration claims of the two men that were released from prison after twenty-three years, so.
Right. A different county, a different county, but it affected the pool a great deal.
It did. It was, there were two claimants, and the claims were in three different counties.
Right.
Because of the.
Logistics.
Things happening. So, like I said, still trying to focus our resources on.
Oh, but that's just an anomaly, and we'll be able to get back up to.
We hope so. We hope so. We do still have one on the books that hasn't, hasn't progressed. That's the guy that put an ad or a letter in the Great Falls paper, I believe, saying that he was suing Sanders County for ninety-seven million dollars. So, we're just not sure, I mean, nobody, like, the county doesn't.
You can sue for anything, see what happens, right?
So, that one is still progressing. There are some legal things about that claim in particular that we're hoping it will just go away, because they weren't filed correctly and statute of limitations, those types of things. So, I'm staying hopeful, but not overly confident. And the bottom is the property, self-insured again to a hundred thousand dollars. Wind and hail is increased to two hundred and fifty thousand. When we went to this new program this year for the shared and layered, we still have that, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's unlikely to find a carrier that's going to move wind and hail back down to a hundred thousand dollars, so. So, the, the property is not near as bad as far as the, the loss ratio for the entire pool. So, the next page is the renewal comparison. So, the first three lines are your T I Vs, that's your total inventory values on your schedules. These are the amounts on your schedules for buildings, contents, vehicles, and the equipment. We did have, it looks like your buildings and contents stayed the, stayed pretty close to the same. And that's with an inflation factor and an appraisal. You guys had an appraisal last year, so.
And I think there was something noticed that wasn't no longer there to insure.
Yes.
Took some things off.
Yes. And that's one of the benefits of doing the appraisal, is trying to, we either find things that the county didn't know they owned, or, hey, we don't own that, we shouldn't be paying premium on it. So, slight increase on your vehicles. The property contribution, this is made up of the property loss fund, that's the amount of premium we collect to pay out property losses. The equipment breakdown or boiler machinery, and then fidelity and crime and terrorism. So, that's all lumped together in that property contribution. You have about a sixteen percent increase there, and that is basically directed right back to the twenty percent increase on the buildings and contents rate. So, it's not at, it's not twenty percent, because you didn't see that rate increase on the vehicles and the equipment. The liability contribution is made up with the liability loss fund, which is the liability premium we collect to cover the losses that are projected for liability, the cyber liability, and then the bond payment. So, you have about a nine percent increase there. Remember, there was a ten percent increase on the base rate for liability, and then, they look at your experience rating. So, I've had some of these, I have one county that's a twenty-eight percent increase on their liability.
But ours is only nine.
Yes, yeah. So, overall, you're at eleven point two seven percent. That's right at the average, so you're, you're doing good. Like I said, hopefully, in the next few years, I'm coming with not double-digit increases.
Right.
Any questions on that? Okay, the next page is the three-year loss ratio history just for Mineral Counties. So, the top is the liability, bottom is the property again. And you do have a hundred and thirty-six percent loss ratio on seventeen eighteen. That'll go away next year, and it won't play into your experience rating. So, otherwise, you're doing great. You don't have, probably any losses, even on the property side too, so that's very helpful. And then, the back of that page is your individual losses that are making up those totals. So, that nineteen eighty-three claim is the one that's driving your loss ratio for seventeen eighteen. It's not, it, that didn't happen in nineteen eighty-three. A third-party nineteen eighty-three claim is stating violation of your constitutional rights, and that's just what the specific claim type is called.
Oh, yeah, because the date was, I remember that was beginning a year ago, maybe, or last fall?
June first of two thousand eighteen.
June, okay, oh, eighteen.
Yes, so that's going to fall off next year, and it won't, won't be used in your calculation.
Oh, okay, now I see it.
And it looks like there's only one that's open. I don't see anything that looks like it might be surprising. Hailstorm, so you have a hailstorm too way up here, so.
The, I asked one before, but I forgot, so can you refresh my memory about when our, when our county truck hit that line with the bucket up, or with the dump up? How, there's like three, there's three or four entries for the same incident. One's, three are closed and one is open, you know why that is?
Yes, so, I'm not sure about. Yes. So I'm not sure about that second one with a zero. There was probably something, somebody that they maybe had to pay out. Um, but they, they ended up not having to. The, the reason why there's two is there was probably two parties that there had to be payment to. Whether it was the telephone pole and then something around it or, you know.
Oh, remember the line caused that one car on the freeway to.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Cable TV line came down, crossed interstate and the car hit it and something happened. So that probably.
Yes. So that's two different claims there in the, within the same claim, but two parties.
Right.
Okay, the next page is, uh, the cyber liability that I was talking about. We had some major changes here. This was very difficult. So the expiring twenty twenty, the orange column heading there, that is what we had for limits last year. So again, they didn't increase our premium, but they did reduce our limits and increase our retention or our deductible. So these were the limits that you used to have and the deductible was a ten thousand dollar deductible. When we first put this in place in two thousand thirteen, there was a ten thousand dollar deductible for the, the county, but then there was no self insured retention for the pool. Now there will still be a two thousand dollar or a ten thousand dollar deductible for the county and the pool is picking up two hundred and fifty thousand before it pays. So that's a huge increase as far as exposure to the, the pool. Unfortunately, um, we don't, it, it's difficult to try to plan for these events. We don't, we haven't had any. We've had this in place since two thousand thirteen and never had a breach. So it's good to have it in place by time. So one of the things that we discussed, the trustees discussed at the meeting is that at the work session in November, they're going to sit down and try to figure this out. Like this was really difficult to put this together. It may come to the, down to like having the counties have to purchase their own. Because there's such a, a vast difference in the rural counties, the, the larger counties, the western counties, the eastern counties. It does, there's so much of a difference in, in every county that it's difficult to underwrite it as a pool. Where way back it was easy, but way back, I'm not sure that the people that were selling this to us even knew what they were talking about. Because it's new. It's, the, the exposures are new. But we're also seeing, you know, on a nationwide basis, Microsoft was breached. So if they're getting hacked into or breached, then it's very likely that that could happen in Montana too. So we'll be looking at that, definitely giving you full, you know, like disclosure. We'll be, we'll be transparent with everything and letting you know ahead of time if we need to be, have that placed somewhere else, um, individually.
That's, that's a tough line. Such a tough line because, you know, if you looked at, I had one yesterday that we had a place with travelers. That would make up a number. It was, it said ten thousand dollars a year for the premium. I got another option that was roughly half the premium, right? But every insurance company, you know, on property, on liability, they're going to cover if you have fire, lightning, wind, you know, those are the things they cover cyber. This one covers this, but that one doesn't. This one, so they're just, they're so different. And I'm, I'm really surprised that you haven't had any issues because we see so many cyber claims anymore. And it went from hacking in and getting your personal information, you know, and using that against you and then you having to notify everybody and defend it, to now the big one is they hold you ransom.
Yes.
And you get it all the time. We get, we get so many of those claims shut down and, and they're super smart. But, you know, April thirteenth, accounting office goes down. We'll release your records, you know, on, by five o'clock this afternoon for X amount of Bitcoin.
Yes.
Right?
Yeah.
And how do you do that? So they're, they're finding contractors when they know the bit, you know, you got a heavy highway job coming up tomorrow. Boom, system goes down. Yeah, we'll release your system for this much Bitcoin.
Yeah.
So those are, it's just, it's really hard to underwrite cyber, which is a different, evolving world. That's a trick.
We, I, we did have one breach a few years ago, but it's not really a breach. Uh, somebody had hacked into Petroleum County's system, but they couldn't see where they had accessed anything but meeting minutes. So the hacker probably assumed that Petroleum County was full of money and they should have petroleum. They were sorely wrong.
Yeah.
But, um.
Kind of like saying Monroe County.
Yeah.
They got a lot of gold.
They do have a lot of money.
And it's my understanding that Missoula County or the city of Missoula, one or the other, Missoula County is self insured, so they're not part of the pool. Um, they experienced a breach and I'm not sure of the specifics of it, but I know their cyber liability policy did come into play, so. Then as far as the memorandum of coverage for the liability side, we did have a, a change last year. We were kind of forced to adopt a new policy form that the reinsurers were just more comfortable with. Um, the biggest change is that it went from seventeen pages to fifty-two pages. But over, you know, the last six to eight months of adjusting claims based on that, the new, uh, policy, our adjusters have said that they actually are, they, they prefer the new policy because it's easier to understand and very, just a little simplified in a lot of areas. So we'll, we're just going to continue with that policy, um, since we don't have any issues there. So there were no changes to that either this year, no coverages taken away, anything like that. And then the property program, like I said, we're moving to that shared and layered program. So it, it won't affect coverage at all. It's just a matter of kind of the internal part. And I was going to try to put together a diagram of explaining it, but it's, I, I need to come up with a simplified way of doing that so that I don't spend forty-five minutes at each meeting trying to explain the, the way it all works. So I'll, I'll get that figured out before next year. So, but you look at it from simple terms, we just have a whole bunch of carriers up here rather than just one controlling everything. Okay, the next page is the map. That's yellow and white. So last year we did start the appraisal cycle, which you were part of the appraisal cycle. So that's why you're over here in this whole yellow area on the left. So because of the, the size of Montana and, you know, the geographic area and it's impossible to try to get them all done in one year and we need to spread the cost out over three years. So this is one of the benefits of, uh, Mako P C T. We do provide the appraisals. And this year we'll be moving to the middle of the state. Um, I had a, a couple of counties last year who were, one was in the middle, one was on the eastern part of the state. And they were asking for information because they'd hired somebody to appraise their buildings. And, you know, first I was like, don't you listen to me in the renewal meetings? We're paying for this. Just give us a year. But, um, so I just, I said it a little nicer than that, but just trying to remind everybody that we're, we're doing this and, you know, we didn't, with this whole western part of the state that we did this last year. I don't know. How did you feel about the process? Did you?
I thought it was great.
Okay.
Yeah. A little bit of work obviously, but I thought it was great.
It is. One thing we noticed is that we didn't have quite the increases on, um, values because we've been keeping up with that on the inflationary factor. So that helps. So that, you know, you're not hit with a thirty percent increase because of your values being increased, so.
The concern that you have, you know, it's, it's always a moving target, but your house strain is exactly the, you know, the example. You know, we, we do the appraisal, everything comes in, you get a number, you know, this building's worth whatever million dollars. Well, it's not today, right? O S B is this, steel is that, concrete is this. So it's, it's kind of a moving target. So I, I liked the fact that it kind of got us back to a good baseline. And then we just kind of have to keep increasing it a little bit as you go type of deal. But you don't want to have an issue on, you know, this building can have a hundred thousand dollars worth of insurance and need a million dollars to replace it.
Yes.
So we want to stay fairly accurate. So I thought it was a good, good system.
And then we do for the, the other two parts of the state that were not appraised last year. And they have an inflationary factor on their replacement value buildings too. So that's what we do to keep it in line every year. Okay, the next page is our risk management. Um, just a few things to kind of review and remind you of. Our public safety risk manager, Dan O'Malley. Again, law enforcement is where our losses are. We really need to focus on that. He's ex-law enforcement. Um, he's come a long way in bridging that gap and helping with the relationship between commissioners and the sheriff or the sheriff and Mako. Um, you know, five years ago, if somebody would have walked in from Mako into the sheriff's office, nine out of ten times they were kicked out. We don't want any insurance people in here. We don't, you know. So Dan's done a really good job as far as building those relationships. And then he's also working on the law enforcement policies and procedures. That's Lexi Poll. So the Property Casualty Trust purchased the Lexi Poll, um, software program and the implementation for the entire state. And the agreement, um, M S P O A was involved in, in choosing the company that we go with and everything. And M S P O A, they all understand that those counties, there are seven of them that are not part of the Property Casualty Trust. They have access to it, but they have to reimburse the trust, so.
Are those, uh, are those larger counties because they're self insured or?
Um, so Missoula's self insured. Um, Gallatin is with another carrier and they have a, a higher deductible, but I'm quoting them right now. And then Anaconda Deer Lodge, Bu- Silver Bow are both part of M M I A just because they have a different form of government. They can qualify for.
On the charter.
Yes. So they can qualify for the, your, our counterpart, you know, for cities and towns. And then the other three are, somebody's mad about something from years ago. Fallon, Carter and Big Horn. So they're very small counties, but they're, they're still mad about something that happened. Probably a basketball game in.
Yeah.
So I still continue to try to work on them, but.
So those smaller ones, are they, are they using Lexi Poll? Cause I, you know, I can get on, we can get online and see how far, you know, like our county's been using it up to seventy percent. And the deputies have all read it and caught up on it and.
And so they could, the implementation, he can only do a like ten counties at a time. So he's on the second phase of them right now. So I'm not positive that those, a lot of the easterns, well, smaller counties are, you know, taking it on yet or not. Right now it was kind of a, who wants to go first and who's, who's willing to do this? And, you know, once we get to the, the last portion of it, it'll be kind of trying to.
Without policy running, it's so time consuming. So I'm sure that it's really beneficial.
Yes. And it's constantly updated and they're based on, you know, legislative changes or anything, you know, case law, those types of things. So it's, it's a good program and so far we've had very positive feedback on that as well. The cyber security program, um, Art Pembroke is a part-time employee with Mako now. This is a program that is funded a hundred percent by a grant that Mako received. This is Mako, it's not the insurance trust. So it's for all the counties in the state and it's just providing more and more cyber security training. And he's really trying to focus on those smaller rural counties who don't have the resources to have an I T person or, you know, help with the ones that are maybe ready to go there, but, you know, need some, some guidance on that. So hopefully we'll continue to have that grant money moving forward as well. Internal controls training. Um, this, this is the fraud embezzlement training, those types of things. Um, we did not get those done last year due to the pandemic. So we were scheduled, Rick Rising with AZ was going to be doing six of them throughout the state. Um, in a, you know, a regional basis to invite the counties in, in the surrounding area. But we didn't get those done. We'll be working on trying to get those scheduled. It's more than likely going to be a late summer, early fall. Um, we just need to make sure that he can go and perform the training and not deal with, you know, six feet apart and all that. It's just every county's different. So right now we're just holding off on getting those scheduled. The regional trainings, um, Mackenzie McCarthy, she's our human resource assistant, little guidance on local government law. And she'll also be doing the regional trainings. So that's H R training. We invite any advice or any suggestions you have for topics as far as, you know, what you'd like to see. Not, everybody kind of gets tired of the same old H R training. And so she's trying to, trying to change that up a little bit. And this is another thing that didn't happen much in the last year. So she will be, I believe, doing these in conjunction with the special, or the district meetings this June. I know they, they haven't set a date yet. Are you aware? I know you'll probably be on those.
Yeah, on the, I think June fifth or something.
Yeah, they're, I know they were throwing out some dates and trying to work it out, but with the session, they obviously, and with it being extended, they need to wait till that's completely done so that they can give the full legislative update. So, um, Dan O'Malley and Mackenzie McCarthy will be giving updates on these two programs when, at the district meetings. The contracted land use attorney, that is Tara Deploy. She's been contracted with us for years to help with the, the session, any land use bills, those, those things. And then also just any county that needs advice or guidance on planning or land use things. Tara is going to be transitioning out at some point. So we are, the tr- the trustees did approve a new position to be an associate general counsel and also handle the land use part. So that position will start July first and work under Tara for two years. So that they can do a full year of seeing what she does with all the counties and then a session. And Tara's been up at the session for years and she, she knows it really good. And so we take a special person to try to fill those shoes. So that's the succession plan on that though. And the facility users guidelines, special events programs. So we've always had those in place. Um, you know, if you're renting or, you know, letting somebody use county property and they're having events that are not county sponsored, they need to have their own insurance. So we have that, we have, we fund a, a program, we help fund it. With the big I that allows the agents to access these lower cost special event policies for people who are having weddings or family reunions, those types of things. Um, we just want to make sure that because every county's different, that we maybe look at your, your facility user agreement, those, you know, the different agreements you're having signed to make sure you're following the COVID nineteen rules, whether they be federal, state or local mandates, so.
So like, what'll that do for some of the counties that might have a fair this year? What's this COVID liability thing?
Well, so COVID, or the fairs are county sponsored, so they have liability. There is a, there is an exclusion in the liability policy of, for communicable disease. That's, that's always been a thing. There's never going to be a carrier that's going to, especially now.
Yeah.
That's going to provide that. But there's also legislation and I'm not sure where it's all at, but there was legislation that was brought to take off the liability from the local governments and businesses.
Mm-hmm.
Just mostly to get rid of all the frivolous lawsuits, those types of things that we don't have. You know, the people, and, and, I mean, there was, there's a lot going on at the session that we still don't have all the.
Especially when it's really difficult to prove where someone picked it up.
Yes.
They may have been at a gas station and went to the fair. And then they say it was the fair. Maybe it was a gas. Or maybe they traveled from Spokane and then went to the gas station.
Yes. Well, it's, it's difficult to try to even give guidance to counties because it's, it really depends on what your, your local public health offices mandated or what the, the county itself has for rules and also, you know, the state's rules. And some counties don't want to follow what the governor said last summer, you know. So it just depends on where it's at. Um, Mackenzie did put a white paper on the, the website with just best practices, if you will, as far as the COVID stuff and having sanitized stations, those types of things. I just, I just want to stick all the way.
I agree.
Okay, the next page is the, um, acknowledgement form. This is you signing off and your agent signing off that you have reviewed your property schedules. If you have a claim on a property, a, a location, um, a big building or equipment or vehicle and it's not on the schedule, there's no coverage. And because it's not on the schedule, there's not a premium being calculated. So this is just signing off so that if something happens and it wasn't on your schedule, you can't blame it on John. John can't blame it on you.
You can blame it on me.
I've got, I've got some dirt on him when he was a thirteen year old boy.
He doesn't, there's no record of it.
I'll keep that in my back pocket too.
There's, there's always a record of it.
Yeah. And so you, we did get some new cards and I assume those got added, John?
Yes, yes.
Yep.
Okay, and then the last page is just, um, a quick overview of the work comp, uh, safety group. These are the same stats that you saw at the membership meeting in February. Right now they're still pulling together the third quarter stats. I should have them. Hope, I'm supposed to have them today to start reviewing and then, you know, once State Fund has their. Hope, I'm supposed to have them today to start reviewing and then, you know, once State Fund has their rates completely set and. Approved, then John will go through all the rates with you and the new rates and where you're at with your e-mod and those types of things, so. These are the two groups, um, the blue group is the one with a modification factor of one or less, so better performance. And then the gold group is above one and you are in the higher group, which. Ultimately, that's the group you want to stay in so that you can earn that return on your premium, that extra benefit of, of this program, so. I don't have a lot to add on this right now, like I said, it's very timely.
Blue is better than gold?
Well.
That's kind of funny, isn't it?
Well, so I've cut a lot of grief over this, I named the groups blue and gold, I'm, it was better than one and two. And I'm a Cats fan, so.
You might as well just come on.
And actually, Stay Fund was the one that said, no, we're gonna go with blue first because of the B being.
Better.
B being first in the alphabet, so.
Oh.
Yeah.
We're in the gold group, we're the gold standard, oh, that's worse than blue, hmm, whatever, okay. We'll be, we'll stay in the blue then, if blue is better than gold.
Definitely stay in the blue.
Yes, yes, and like I said, uh, John will be getting all the information to be able to go in detail with your. Performance over the last year and, you know, working with, moving forward on that, so. That's all I have. Any questions for me?
Is Bozeman gonna have a football team this year?
I don't know, what's going on?
I had to ask, had to ask. After the blue came up.
Carroll College made it to the, the.
I see that.
NAI championship and it's because there were five other teams that didn't play in their conference, so, I mean.
It didn't go so well for.
No, it didn't.
Did it, did not, did the Or Diggers play Carroll?
No, they didn't play this year at all.
Oh, they did not, oh, I did not know that.
Yeah, no, I have two nephews actually that played for Carroll.
Oh, you do?
Um, but, yeah, no local ones, so, yeah.
Ryan Rugg's son plays for Carroll.
I think they were good, but I think they were, like you said, not a whole lot of competition and then they went to Iowa last weekend and just got. I guess my only two cents worth, if you're, you know, I'm, if you guys would like I am, I'm cheap. Just hate to spend extra money if we can help it, right? Ten, eleven percents, that's kind of a victory for you this year, it really is, it's, you know, the way that. We insurance people love our insurance terms, but the hard market basically just, basically kind of lines it out, it's like. We got a bucket of money on the table, right, and you guys keep putting your premium in it and then we got claims, we'll take the premium out, right, we'll pay the claims with it. So it's not really your guys' or even the county's through great extents experience, it's what's going on.
In the world of.
You know, in America. So you've got all these insurance companies that are paying for hurricanes and storms in Texas and entire. Towns burning down, right, and they're pulling money out of that bucket faster than they can, they're like. Somehow we gotta replenish the bucket, so that, that's kind of, there, there's two bad trends out there now, property one, because of that. And then, um, auto liability, but your autos stay, you know, pretty flat, but the, the, the amounts of money being paid out on. Auto claims is just, if you had a hundred thousand dollar claim and they owned it, that was a big claim, right? You heard somebody bad, now it's a million dollars before you like that, right, so it's just, it's a bad time for the market, so then that just runs downhill. So that's kind of where you're at, but that's a, you've really done a good job with that, you know, without going into the layer, you, you guys don't really need. We could tell you however you want to, you know, semantics of how layering works and things, but basically you got insurance. And if it goes with this company or this company or this company, as long as the coverages are there, so we just need the market to kind of catch up with things and fill the bucket back up. And then that'll settle things down a little bit, hopefully.
I've been told that this is the hardest market since the eighties, early eighties when. I'm still in grade school.
What interest rates were fourteen percent on a loan for a house?
Yes.
Right. Well, I, I, I will be the old guy in the group, hate to admit, but, uh, you know, with that, and that's what I'm hoping doesn't happen here is, you know. It, it starts with rate, right, premiums go up, but then it gets to the point where it's a capacity issue, it's where insurance companies say like. We don't want to take on that much risk because we don't want to empty out the bucket, right, so now all of a sudden, we used to be able to get three million dollars worth of cyber. We're only gonna give you one, because we're not gonna put that much. And then in the eighties, well, I started in eighty-seven, but the, the eighties, we were just on the tail end of it, where it not only affected price and capacity. But it affected appetite, so all these insurance companies were like, we love counties, we love garbage truck companies, right? And all of a sudden they're like, we don't love counties, you know, we don't love garbage truck, you, we don't, so, so all these companies that were looking to compete for your business. Goes through about this, you get three or four that are, that are even willing to look at it. And that's a problem when you can't find an, an insurance company that will insure whatever your business is, loggers, those, I mean, brutal, right? So hopefully we don't get to an appetite issue, hopefully it's just kind of, we take a little bit of a bump in the rate. And then we've gone about our business and the world returns to normal, so fingers crossed.
And the appetite part, I mean, that, we're seeing that on the wind and hail, there's no carrier out there that was gonna let us go with a hundred thousand dollars. They moved it up to two hundred fifty thousand per claim, so that was last year even, so I just, we hope we can keep that hundred thousand dollar threshold. For a while.
Safety and all that kind of stuff, you're good, you need anything else going on or trainings or anything?
Yep, they just had one the other day when I was in here, three hour training.
Well, obviously your, your e-mod is pretty good if you're up in that other group, so stay there. And actually, I do know from the preliminary information of the third quarter, these are first quarter stats, so. Third quarter stats, um, that this incurred loss ratio for the whole group of blue at forty-three percent, I'm pretty sure that's gone down by at least ten percent, so. But that was very preliminary, I've not seen final numbers.
My work comp two cents worth, just because I love to hear myself talk, I guess, um, just to reiterate the, you know, get people back to work. Mentality, because that mod, you know, basically you take your premium times whatever that mod is, and that, you know, your premium goes up or down. But if you, if you get people back to work, you guys have heard me say this, but, you know, if somebody hurts their arm and it's a little bit of medic, it's a. Ten thousand dollar medical deal, a third of that loss goes into your calculation. If there's a penny of wages, the whole deal goes in, so every claim where there's payroll. They call it indemnity, but where there's payroll, you know, that they have to pay, is three times worse to your mod than just having a medical thing. So you get people back to work.
I, I think I may have asked you about it earlier, but we, we try to, you know, we have, seem to have a little bit of. Ability to encourage people back to work when they're an hourly employee, but an elected official sometimes is difficult. Uh, because they're not getting paid by the hour at all or even required to show up, they're just elected. So we really don't know what to do when those instances happen, when they're just saying, no, I still can't come back to work and, you know, the FMLA and all that kind of stuff, those. Those rules aren't even applicable, so.
Yeah, Mackenzie struggled with that quite a bit, that just, people taken advantage, I guess, you know, you can't. You don't have, you have control to a certain level, I'm sure, so.
That's a tough one.
Yeah.
Maybe you just appealed to their greater good, saying, you know, how much money this has cost to the county by having you not show up.
But, you know, people in this day and age now, they just don't care.
We have one county that over the last few years, terrible mod, just the culture of. Work comp was fine, you could just stay on it, and they had a new, new HR person that handled everything, um, as far as. The safety, the return to work, all of that and, I don't know, I'm hoping it was done legally and not. Wrongfully, but, um, she just started changing the culture that it's not okay and, you know, a lot of the people started to understand that. People are gonna think bad of you if you're taking a work comp claim and sitting at home, you know, and not going back to work, especially when you have. Different duties that are offered to you to, to keep working.
Or you can be a combination of being made, or worse yet, Shannon, when someone sees them on Facebook.
Yes.
Snowmobiling or dirt biking or fishing or hauling an elk out, yeah. Then they go, well, how come they can't come to work, you know?
Yeah.
So one of the, the biggest benefits of this, I mean, the, the premium savings and everything with, with State Fund, but. They have the fraud, the investigation, um, section and, you know, we could never afford as a small pool. We could never afford to have those resources and we'd had discussions with them about, you know, contracting with their fraud department. Um, but it's, because it's really tough to prove fraud in Montana, um, especially with. Work comp being a little bit doctor driven, so.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's frustrating and that happens everywhere.
Yeah.
Yep.
Do they have any decent doctors in Anaconda anymore? I heard that one guy lost his job.
That one guy lost his job.
Actually, Anaconda, that hospital's grown up, there's.
Had it?
Yeah, they're starting to bring a bunch of them in.
Okay.
Yeah, not like Bozeman, I was in Bozeman the other day, they have two more clinics being built, it's just. I don't know what state Bozeman is in, but it, I did see a bumper sticker the other day that said, uh. Keep Bozeman, or, or no, make Bozeman Montana again. Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Cause it, it is not. Yeah, not like the Bozeman, not like the Bozeman you went to, probably.
No, it's way different.
I went to Bozeman for a year in eighty-three, eighty-four and it was still cowboy town.
Yeah.
They had all those cowboy.
Back to Missoula.
Yeah, they had all those western bars, you know, Cat's Palm, Sundance and.
Molly and all.
Yeah, 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 oh, did you go there too?
I was probably the guy to Molly that you were mad at or something.
Yeah.
I went, yeah, eighty-three.
Went in there one time. Oh, you said you were the old guy in the room. Now you're talking about me, John.
Yeah, it's definitely changed, even in the last ten years alone, I lived there fifteen years ago, um, but it. Even their commissioners, um, just the, the whole outlook of the county themselves and.
Very different.
Direction, yeah.
Do you want signatures, their signatures and my signature on the same one, or me to, you want to sign one of those, send it this way and I'll sign?
Oh, okay.
I think, I thought I had, but I.
You may have already done it, um, but.
Yeah, this one here, uh.
Really easily on top of our stuff, so.
Want me to sign this one in case?
She's really good.
Yeah, if you want to do that, then I'll sign them, then.
Yeah.
Take one I'm done. Scan it really quick before you leave and.
Bonnie was very happy when I started putting that in the packet, because I usually get, somebody's gonna sign it right away and then they all get sent in and. Because otherwise she holds commissions if you don't get them in.
Did you stay in North Hedges like I did, or where were you?
I was in South.
Oh, you were in South?
I was in South, yeah.
And, uh, yeah, I got there right after the, uh, Cat in the Punch incident, remember that one?
I do, I had a different name for it that I won't say and. You're exactly right, yeah, I know exactly right, I know exactly what frat that was.
Yeah, do you, I don't remember the name of it, but, uh.
I think it was the, was it the Pike House, if I remember right?
That sounds right, that does sound right.
They made it rhyme and it had punch was the second part, it was, it was not good.
Well, I do want to thank you as Roman's fellow commissioners, because he's about to leap into a lot of time away from you guys with his. Position now, his second VP moving through the ranks to be president of Mako, so.
Yeah.
It takes a lot of support on your end for that too, so thank you for that.
Yeah, we thought, we thought about that when we said it was okay for him to do it.
I'm trying to help our little county kind of get in the mix better and get some.
Yes, you're doing a great job with that.
Yeah, yeah, and I even got to go to another county that doesn't get much credit, Webo, when you hosted the thing over there at.
Yes.
Richland County, we went, what was the name of that steakhouse we went to?
We went to the Shamrock.
Shamrock, yes.
We had our work session in Sydney in Richland County and then we. Took a bus ride over the backroads to my hometown.
Yep.
Went to the brewery.
Okay, are we gonna BS now?
Yeah.
All right, all right, so that ends the official part of the meeting with, uh, the stories from far and wide. So, okay, we have the eleven o'clock on the agenda. A road department update with foreman T-Bone Jason McLeese.
I, and mine's pretty simple, I just came in to give an update and, and I do have one, one thing to talk about, um. Update is, is we've bladed through every, all the roads basically in the county except for a couple of wests are still too wet. We've been from Alberton to St. Regis and back and we're almost through sweeping the whole, the whole descent of the county except for the west end. So it's going pretty good, we're, you know, we got, we're a little bit shorthanded right now. Um, one of the things I wanted to chat about was a possibility, you know, we've talked about adding a guy to the county road, right, so we have fifth guy, because. What we run into is we run into, like in the summertime, chip seal and Wally doesn't want to do it anymore. You know, Jim Lowman said he would last year and then he couldn't do it, he had things, he doesn't want to really do it, we have. And we used to, we've got Kelly before to help, you know, with that kind of stuff and what, and. I didn't have nobody to do it, Wally does not want to do it, without five guys in the summertime, you know, and then we struggle to get our. We struggle to get our mowing done, because we're out, you know, like last year we did, we did a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars of asphalt work last year. Ninety loads of asphalt, three loads of chip seal oil, which is ten thousand gallons of oil, so, or ten thousand per load. So we did a lot, we, we, we're getting a lot of stuff done, you know, we talked about, you talked about ditches and, but when we're also, we're so spread out, we got two guys going here. Two guys going there and it's hard unless, that's a more of a, that's a crew project where you have to pick up stuff and haul it away, you know, and. I could really use one more guy, you know, I'm getting, more and more, I'm getting torn away for. To look at driveways, to look at subdivision stuff, to look at this and that, bridges, you know, and I'm just.
Driveway encroachment permits.
It's a law, it's getting more and more, like this last, basically this last month, I feel like I haven't had enough seconds in the day to get, you know. Cause I'm running from one end of the county to the other and meeting, meetings and meeting with this guy or meeting with that guy and making sure we have. Uh, projects lined up for the crew, you know, and it's easy this time of year because we're blading and sweeping, but, you know, I gotta have a, I have to have lists ready for. I have to order oil, you know, right now, so I have to have a, some kind of quote ready for the oil company, so they know how much oil we're gonna buy this year. You know, we have to have, know where we're gonna be, dust abatements coming up, we have a lot, it's just a lot, just getting to be more and more, and I just think. I guess my request is, I'd like to hire a fifth person, um, we have one playoff on sick leave.
Three down to three.
Deal with that one as it comes, um, but that's where I'm at with today's, mostly today's meeting. Start looking at a, at a fifth person. Oh, the forest service stuff, yeah, it takes up a lot of my time too, the projects. Anyway, I don't know what you guys' thoughts are, I know we've talked about it, talked about it last year, we talked about it the year before, um.
Well, you're, you're, uh, one department that's not having any money problems right now because of, well.
Right.
The SRS and Pilt money is, of course, SRS is just earmarked for your department only.
Right.
And the fact that you've only got three or four guys working, so.
And I feel like, you know, this is my twenty-first year, I've kind of proven myself of being, I'm pretty tight, you know. We spend some money when, when it's needed, but we try to, you know, we're running some, our oil trucks are nineteen sixty-four, we're making it work. You know, we're, we're trying, obviously we're trying to update some equipment where we can, when we can, but, I think, I don't know, I'm, I'm fairly. Fairly good at it.
And you, you know, fact of the matter, you've been under manned for quite some time, I mean, when you get busy, you're busy.
Yeah, and even if we hired somebody, you know, going into the winter time, you know, and I'll use this for example, that last snowstorm, you know, there, here we go on Monday. I get a call from Terry that he has an uncle that I am stakeout, and I'm like, okay, well, you know, we have a, there's this. Winter storm warning coming on Friday, but the last ten winter storm warnings didn't happen, so, but, well. You can't miss a funeral, and then Jeff's got a, Jeff's kid went to a basketball, took the divisional basketball tournament, I'm like. I hate to say no, what do I say, well, stay just in case, you know, well, they leave.
Then it snows.
Friday night, it snows like, uh, uh, well, twenty inches of pack of grit, and I'm like, we have two guys to cover the entire county, so I mean, it. Which, like I said, it didn't bother me, we, twenty-one years, I've never missed a snowstorm, so I'm kind of proud of that, I mean. Twenty-one years, I've never missed a snowstorm, so, I'm kind of proud of that, I mean, but, but we did it, and we got it done, and it helped. But if we had another guy, it would sure free up some time.
Let somebody have vacation.
Part of the problem running to is, you know, we got Terry up west, and Terry's doing a great job, you know, Jeff's down east, but if we have something break, you know, then we gotta say, oh, Terry, well, what do we do? Where are we, I mean, we have to be our own mechanic most of the time, but that only goes so far. And we say, well, so if we had an extra guy that could maybe cover, and one of the things we need to look at too is, I think, you know, Terry's got his own business going, he's getting, he's kind of like Kelly, or he's kind of like Wally, they do their own thing, they get busier and busier and busier. Terry told us he'd give us five years, you know, that was three years ago. And, you know, he's getting busier and busier, and I truly respect whatever he wants to do, but I do think that eventually he's going to do his own thing. Jeff came from, Jeff came in from the DOT, right, he worked at Scale. He's got almost the same amount of years as I do, as far as retirement, so in ten years, that's a hundred percent turnover of what we have right now. So, we need to start looking at that future of, it'd be nice to get some guys, young guys in there to carry the torch, you know, so... And, you know, everything we do, we usually, I send guys out cold patching, or usually if we're blading, we've got two guys on a blade, or for sweeping, we've got two guys sweeping, or, you know, everything's two guys, so if I had another guy, I would have a crew going this way and a crew going this way, and I could fail and do my, all the stuff I have to do, and, and still work, obviously, no change there, but just be a, free a little more time up for, like I say, it would be nice in the wintertime to have somebody to, you know, I could, we have an extra truck that we, my old truck, Terry drives it now once in a while, up to the west end if there's not a lot of snow. But we have the grader, you know, I could have maybe a guy go out, and that'd be great, have somebody start on the grader, start learning that, you know, that, those controls, and go do the Cedar Creek, Party, Flat Creek, Dry Creek, Keystone, you know, the big five dirt roads, you know, or something in the wintertime, that would sure free up everybody else to stretch a little bit, and so...
Well, I always thought it made, that, like in the wintertime, you guys work eight-hour shifts, you start like at five in the morning, well, then you're done at, what, one o'clock? Well, then in the afternoon, it warms up, and the roads are slush, you know, if you had extra guys to where you could maybe split, split their times a little bit, get that slush off, so that by morning time, it's not all frozen, a big mess.
And this could give us a flexibility to do something, because the problem with that being with four guys is, we have four routes, and we have four school bus routes, so we gotta go hammer it out, well, after eight hours of pound of snow, that's a lot. And usually if it snows a bunch, we're out for ten hours, you know, most, most big days anyway, and barring any breakdowns or stuff, so it would give us a little more flexibility to be able to do something like that, you know, whether we kept the same and brought one guy in or two guys in to, in the afternoon, just hit the main roads, the asphalt or something, get the slush off, yeah, no, that's, all that's definitely...
I do want to say, folks in Packer Creek are very pleased with Terry.
Yeah.
For being, for being new on that, and, you know, they really liked the job that he's doing, and they've complimented me, and they've complimented him, and I just thought I'd pass that along.
Yeah, Terry's...
Pass it along, and that's, those folks will let you know when something's wrong.
Oh, yeah.
Just he'd go back to the graders with the steering wheels, and Kelly'd be more apt to...
And, you know, I called him that snowstorm, and I asked him, and he didn't want, he didn't feel comfortable, and I can't blame him a bit, because, you know, even a truck, you know, you, I know we've talked about, well, being able to switch areas with a truck. It's tough, because you don't know, nobody knows where my, my one high manhole is, or my, my rock on the shoulder that I gotta dodge, or that stump that I gotta watch out for that's covered and stuff, you know what I mean? They don't know that stuff, so that's what'd be cool to have, if you had a, kind of a rover guy that started learning that stuff slowly over the next two or three years.
To do it all.
And then, and then they could finish, finish, fit in wherever, wherever need be, you know?
And that's what Kelly said, he said, you know, he kind of felt bad that he...
Oh, I know he did, but I...
Didn't do it, but, you know, he's not used to the joystick grader, and he just...
If it was me, and I was, even me, I had to go run, I went and ran it, and I ran it, I run it in the summertime, but I went and ran it when Terry was gone, and I was, I'm all over the road, and I mean, it's, you get rusty, I get rusty in six months, so he's never ran one of them.
Yeah, well, that's it.
So, no, I can blame him a bit, that's not a, that's, that was, and like I said, it was kind of a fun, it, to me, it was a lot of work that day.
But you got it done.
It was a challenge, and I felt like, I always liked that, you know, when it's important and there's a challenge, you know, I was, I had goals, I went to work at midnight, and I'm like, okay, I gotta be done by, I gotta be done in St. Regis by five-thirty, so I can be at the west end by five-thirty, five-forty-five or something, and I did it, and then, you know, you got it done, and just, I don't know.
Even if it looked like a snake went down the middle of the road.
Probably, I went up Packer Creek, because I plowed mostly with the, I plowed mostly with my plow truck. So, I go up Packer Creek, and I start plowing, and I'm like, holy shit, I got my plow tipped all the way, as hard as it'll go. And I'm like, the snow's coming up over the top, and it's on my windshield, I can't see, I go up and I come down, and I literally had one pass wide. It was twenty inches deep at the top, and I was like, oh my God, so then I had to go back, actually go back and get the grader, come back. But no, it was good. But anyway, that's pretty much my request, and like I said, what I'd like to do is, I'd like to start looking at, at getting somebody coming now, and then depending on what happens on this with my other employee, you know, we can look at that later and deal with that, but that would...
So, what would you advertise that at, do you think?
As far as pay, you know, in my mind, I was thinking, I gotta look and see, I don't, I mean, I'd like to see Jeff and Terry get bumped up a little bit in the budget time, but I'm thinking it's going to have to be in that sixteen to seventeen range to stay, to even think about getting somebody competitive, you know, you know, we're hiring, we're hiring other employees at fifteen dollars now, no experience, and these guys are going to be required to have a physical, and they're going to be required to have a special license, and they're going to require some experience, you know, so...
Random.
That's what I was thinking.
That CDL is going to be pretty valuable.
I'm looking at your budget, and right now, I mean, we're three-quarters through the year, you're at forty-eight percent.
Right, yeah, I looked at, I looked at my query the other day, so, I'm plenty good enough, and like I said, we'll have to rebudge, I just... And we, like I said, I've been pretty good at being tight, and, you know, if we don't have to do overtime, we don't, you know, if I feel like we don't, you know, I'm not, I don't know, I've been doing a long time, and starting to learn what I'm doing.
You may want to consider a little higher than, maybe eighteen, you know, I don't know. I'm just looking at this ad here, sixteen ninety-two.
I know, without a CDL.
Yeah.
So, I, I'll think about this a little bit, you know, what, the only thing I worry, I don't want to hire somebody at the same rate as what I got guys that have been there for ten years.
Oh, I know, I know, it's hard.
I want to, I want to make sure that I can get those guys, have enough to get those guys bumped up, you know, because they're, my guys are, they're valuable to me, and...
Well, especially when they're married to the job, and the only reason that they're sticking around for snowstorms is because they want to, they want to please you and your team.
I say fricking, I say fricking Jeff left to that basketball game, but he, you know, he got done, as soon as he got done with basketball games, that next morning, he packed his shit, was here in the afternoon, went to work at like two o'clock, and worked until nine o'clock, just if, you know? He did his part, I mean, he busted his butt and got back, he didn't have to come back from U, they had motel rooms, you know, already for that next night, they canceled and came home.
You know, we've had a hard time dealing with paying competitive wages, but if we don't start jacking it up, we're not going to have anybody. Everybody is that way, I mean, it's, these guys, the mill down there, it's tough. Most of those are really good jobs, you know, just, the people are working other places, and they're being paid more money.
Yeah, and like I said, we could pay somebody competitive and get somebody good in here, you know? My goal always is to, I treat my employees like they are, I mean, we barbecue together, we hang out together, we, and I try to be, treat them like, like they're loved, you know, and that's how I feel. I think, I think that's a lot, I think that's a lot, if you guys are happy and your crew's happy, things are good. You got hard workers, they're, they're, they feel like they have buy-in to the, to the job, and they're going to show up every day, you know?
Amen to that.
Amen to that.
Yeah, no, I agree, I think they do a good job, but I can see the need for a little more help overall. I was going to ask if the Forest Service is doing their share in all this log hauling on the county roads. Are they doing any maintenance, or are they doing payment in lieu of maintenance?
Well, we get, we do get, our Secure Rule School is in lieu of the, the logging money that used to come into us.
Right.
But they do, well, IFG does a pretty damn good job of, on a hauling road, like they can, Angelo called me the other day, and we're, we're elbows deep in Grayden Road, you know, he called me and said, you want us to grade Party? I'm like, that'd be awesome, if you guys could do that, you know, so they take care of that stuff. The Forest Service has done a great job, and like now, they're going to run a project, project agreement this year to gravel a portion of a mile and a half of cam rack, and ditch it up, so they're, yeah, if I ask them, Nate's been more than happy, more than happy to help out, or Mike, or, you know, with different things, dust abatement, gravel, you know, so, yeah, I think they, they're doing... They're doing so much better than they used to, and IFG's doing a great job, you know, IFG, IFG Angelo is always willing to, you know, hitch in where, where they can, and, you know, so, yeah, I think right now, everything in the, as far as the county goes, I think everything, people are working together, and everybody's happy, and our partners are happy, except for the state, obviously. They don't want to do anything.
Well, I was going to ask that next about the state.
State doesn't do anything.
All that heavy hauling on Four Mile, you know, and they pushed it too far up Danley's place and tore up his road.
Right, and I told him, well, I went up there one day, there was twenty trucks hauling, and it was, I'm like, I told him I had to be off by ten, because it was getting soft and muddy, and they had trucks stuck and in a ditch, and they were trying to pass each other, I'm like, and they could have went around, they're supposed to go around through Burr Saddle and come out by the sewer pond.
Oh, make it...
I'm like, I'm like, why aren't you sending empty trucks up this way, and loading trucks that way, so they're never trying to pass and get around?
Well, didn't they haul off Burr Saddle first, and then they went over to Danley?
Yeah, because it was shorter, because Danley gave permission to go through his property, but, but, anyway, yeah, we got that road all fixed up, our side, anyway, Danley's probably never be fixed, but they fell through that one pretty bad. Anyway, that's all I have, I know I'm running out of time, so...
So, you're wanting, so right now, it's just time for an update, so you want to get on the agenda in the future to discuss an action of...
Yeah, let me do some research this week, and can I get on the agenda next week?
Yeah, I was just going to ask you, how would Friday the thirtieth at ten o'clock work?
Next Friday at ten o'clock.
Next Friday?
Yeah, or do you want to wait, is that too soon?
Hey, can we do two, I gotta come in two Fridays from now, I think, for availability, is that correct?
Yep, you're coming in this, let me see. Yeah, you're eleven o'clock on the May seventh.
Can I just do it then, because I should be able to, now there's a...
We'll just add that to the bid opening on that agenda.
And just for you guys, FYI, there's a bid coming out for a gravel job on Trout Creek that they're going to haul gravel out of Thompson Peak and do from Harlett Corner up, so that's, that's what's coming down the pipe, so that's one of the Forest Service scheduling projects.
With the Forest Service.
Okay.
So, okay, well, you guys are...
Mr. Kepke, the end of the question.
Oh, good.
I've got an observation while you're here, I got here a couple minutes late, and I heard you mention ditches, and I used to work a lot of road maintenance on timber sales, and so I learned a lot about, about how to do it, or how to, what to look for, right? And, you know, we're on Four Mile, we're up and down Four Mile a lot, and the tendency for gravel roads is to get flatter and wider, that's just how they go, and the drainage is worse and worse, the flatter they get, the wider they get. And so, I know the Forest Service has gone, is actually narrowing some of their road rhythms to get more, get better shape, and have less surface area to collect the water, that's just one angle of it. But as far as the ditch cleaning and pulling shoulders in, I mean, some of the roads, excuse me, need some heavy maintenance, right? Now, they're just getting too wide and too flat, and there's a lot of material out there, it's going to take a lot of, it'd be tedious processing it because of the sod clumps and everything else, but I see a need for, for that, a growing need, because the roads are wider than they need to be, they're flatter than they should be, and I think they'd hold up better if they were...
Yeah, we don't really narrow roads, we like a little wider with the portions, because, you know, they narrowed up Cedar Creek, and shoot, some places there, you can't, you have to stop to pass cars, and then...
Yeah.
But no, I, we were definitely, we definitely, we target, you know, so many miles of road every year to ditch and, and pull shoulders and ditches, and so, and then, one of the things we, a lot of times, we've been dragging stuff in, and then you get all the sod and the pine needles, so we've been rock raking it out, and that's worked good, I actually, we're heading to order new tines for our rock rake here, so...
More amount.
Oh, yeah, it's a nineteen sixty-something rock rake, and I looked at rock rakes, and they're like ten thousand dollars for a big one like what we got, so I was able to get tines for thirteen hundred, so, anyway.
Saunders Lane, right there, about the cattle yard on Four Mile, goes uphill, that one's the same way.
Yeah.
The water runs lengthwise, because it's, you know, I always say water's pretty smart if you show where to go.
The hard thing, and, yeah, a lot of, like that one, the water runs down their road, onto our road, and so, but yeah.
Speaking of roads, I had a guy ask me the other day, what was the chances of taking over a private road? And I said, to my knowledge, I can ask, but to my knowledge...
No chance.
We don't take over any more roads.
No.
And Cochran Lane is what, they're getting tired, one or two people plow with snow in the wintertime, and they're getting tired of doing it, and I said, you know...
And we're going to kick, get kicked right in the shins for, for doing what we did in the past, with these subdivisions, and, you know, I had a big run-in this year up at Deer Lake Subdivision at Hogg, you know, the guy, we pushed snow in this guy's driveway, it's what they wanted for thirty-plus years, you know, we pushed snow, and well, this year he wanted to, he wanted to be in there, so we had to move the snow, but then we went to move the snow to another guy's, and, and to across the cul-de-sac, onto our rightaway, and we had them people come out and screaming at us, and, oh, and it was just a, I was like...
What do you do in a case like that?
Well, we have rightaway, we're going to put it on the rightaway, and they're going to complain, but he told me, but he told me, he goes, your job, I pay you, your job is you're going to drift this snow down the road, which was five hundred yards, and then take it down the hill a quarter mile. That's your job. I said, well, if we did that, that's all we do, that's all we do in a day.
On the seventh, on the seventh, yeah, on the eleventh.
But it's a...
But you can't put it on their private property, right?
No, but yeah, right away.
Yeah.
And what they, but the problem is, is these people are, they're landscaping right up to the cul-de-sac, you know, right up to the pavement, and...
Yeah. No, I told him, I thought that was probably the answer.
No, I believe, I believe, well, I'm fairly certain that the commissioners previously had signed a resolution to never, not accept any more county roads, so, that's kind of where we're at.
That was when Rudy and BJ and...
Yeah, and Jimmy, because they see, but it's getting, it's been, it's been nuts this year, and it was nuts last year, it was, it's worse this year, and it's only going to increase, you know, with the, all these new people we have in here, and, you know, what they want and what they don't want, and the need is...
What they think they want.
Right, and it's just, it's, I'm telling you, it's going to intensify, these next five years are going to be, they're going to be a struggle, so, you're going to see a lot of people, you'll probably hear a lot of people wanting this and wanting that, you know?
One more quick observation, like on Four Mile where we live, it's chip seal road, it's a decent road, but in some cases, the shoulders are growing higher than the road surface, just from years and years of sanding and graveling and all that. It almost looks like it needs an end loader or something to scoop down, scrape down those shoulders, so the water will get off the road.
Right, you, yeah, and we pull them, we pull them with a grader, pull them into the road, then we have to load them with a loader into a truck and haul it away.
Right.
It's a process, I say, hey, we target so many roads every year to try to...
That's a lot of work on the chip seal, is to have to go to that extent.
Yeah, and the problem with like Four Mile is, the road's lower than everybody's property.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, so all the water comes down.
And then it comes down my driveway.
Yeah.
I took some of the gravel from the snow plowing that got teased off the road into the grass, and, you know, we keep a, we mow the rightaway right, right to the shoulder, because that's how it came, that's how, like, Fox used to do it. And I just scoop up surplus gravel, and I build up my little water bars in my driveway, because it just comes from Anderson's house, runs down the road, passing our mailbox, and comes right down our driveway. And one time, we had a dully wash through a storm that cut a rail all the way down to our house, it was that much water.
So, you're saying they have to charge you for the gravel?
No, I'm doing you a favor. I'm letting the water come down on us.
I used to patch the check holes in my driveway down there before we moved, Duke Leonard, and then he seen me doing it, and he started sweeping them. Didn't leave me no gravel.
Oh, yeah, no, I scoop it up here and there for a bunch of plow holes.
Yeah, and then the only other thing is, is, you know, like if you have a grader going to Dry Creek or whatever, you're going out the southside road, you've already swept, he's on his way out there, maybe...
Just did it.
Cut that, huh?
He just did it. When I went to St. Regis, I cut the shoulders.
Oh, yeah, well, I, and then, I know that the grader Cedar Creek, you know, on his way up, you know, he could have cut that gravel off, and grass off.
We do often, but... We do often, but like he's running carburete teeth right now. So he can't. Oh, you know, one forty, he's got a carburete teeth on it. So he can't cut the, but yeah, we try to do it. But it's also hard to keep up on a, when you sweep every road and then you go back and. And we're always in, you know, we're always in such a damn hurry because we got so much to get. I got, I got these, like these goals, I wanna be done blading in two weeks. And I wanna be done sweeping in two weeks and it, I don't know, I gotta be done so I can get ready for asphalt and it. But I, I think we're doing okay right now where we're at, so. But yeah, I've got a big list of ditches and shoulders and stuff that, you know, we're getting, tamarack was a big one for this year. If I can get the Forest Service to do that.
So are you gonna tie that then?
Yeah, I'll definitely, I definitely, like I said, if I, if I can. Yeah, you know, I, I need to, if I can get everything together, get my, I'll do a job description for this position. And get everything gathered and then when I come in on a, maybe we can approve that, you know, the hiring of a fifth employee, a fifth spot. Yeah, and we'll figure out what we wanna pay. You guys kicking around a little bit, think, you know, we wanna go, like I said, if we go, if we go eighteen, we've, we've gotta move those other guys up.
Well, yeah, I ain't saying.
So, I just can't. I feel like they've been so good to me.
And everybody's, everybody's encountering that same.
Uh, yeah, I feel fortunate, you know.
Everybody's trying to get the best man.
Yeah, I feel fortunate that we've had such good, you know, guys that are, they've stayed with us, you know, for the most part for a long time and it's been good. I mean, I think longevity is such a huge deal, you know, to get people to stay and to, you know, and, and for me, you gotta, and you guys, we gotta motivate people to be here, you know? The, the benefits are, to me, are motivation, you know, young kids don't see that. Yeah, you know, so, and, and that's what we talked about, even at that makers meeting, we talked about that and they said, how do you, how do you motivate people to apply? And they said, well, we get the older generation all day long because they want, they're getting to the point where they want retirement and they want.
And we're not that much older.
Young kids, all they want is cash in their pocket.
Yeah, and then they, at eight, eight hours, I mean, there's no, um, ethics in their work or whatever. It's, I'm gonna go put in eight hours, go home and not even think about it, you know? I mean, they, they have no work ethic, a lot of them, you know, it's.
Well, I wish, I wish that, I wish that was easy to do because.
Yeah.
I can't, like in the wintertime, I'm a wreck all the time. I probably check the weather forty times a day, you know? I got, I got knocked out, I got knocked out and I go to the hospital. I don't even remember it. And I guess I asked if it was slick out, like five hundred times. Is it slick out? Is it snowing? Is it slick out?
Did we get the roads just flat?
Yeah, I didn't, I, I'll, I'll put this stuff together and I'll have it for the eleventh meeting or whatever the date is.
Well, we're open, uh, public comment, Mary.
See you guys.
See ya, T-Bone. All right, eleven thirty and comments from the public, if there are any, we're open.
Yeah, I'll get them out. Um, the Rural Board has received an annexation for petition to their district. And before they move forward on it, they want to talk to you. And their concern is that that process be more transparent. And they, if they can get on your agenda to discuss it with you next Friday, they would appreciate that chance.
Have Don put it on the agenda for next Friday.
Here's a letter for the agenda. Um, I'll just get the time back. Mary Jo Lohman, the Fire Board also wanted to attend the meeting as well with you to kind of give you her perspective as well. The second thing that they want to do is give the community out there an opportunity to engage the bigger community. They'd like to have a community meeting between the Fire Board and the community there. And so that everyone has a better understanding of what's occurring. And an opportunity to jump on board if they really so wish.
Does the, does the Fire Board have a scheduled time to visit the issue?
No, they wanna meet, fit into your calendar.
Oh, okay, okay.
They want to have the community-wide meeting, if that was the question, as soon as possible.
Okay.
So I think their plan is to meet with you and then jump right to doing a mailing notice and then having some kind of a community meeting out there.
Right.
We've been hard at work identifying a site and we've got a potential site that's owned by the state, the old school site. Out at Muddy Creek and Tarkio Luke Road. Um, you know, as you guys run into all the time, the state's not sure what they own and don't, don't own. And so they've gotta wade through that a little bit, the history of title, before they can say yea or nay. Danley's agreed to help with that a bit. But they'd like to meet with you. So before acting on that petition, that would be great for Friday. The second thing is the tour of the airport. Carol Johnson's really tough calendar to get into and fit into. She had offered us a time of next Thursday at three o'clock and I know Laurie can't make that. But the question, I guess, of you guys is, would you like us to go ahead with next Thursday at three o'clock? The other two could participate if you so choose.
Are you going to that thing, Emily, that housing?
Well, that housing thing.
Yeah.
Didn't they already have it yesterday?
I thought it was next at the twenty, oh, was it the twenty-second yesterday?
Oh.
I was on there on Zoom for a while.
Oh, okay, all right.
Or we could try to take another shot at it and get another date out of Carol Johnson, so.
Well, I guess I could be there because that's the day there's an interview that you still leave me to be on, to come down.
How long, how long would?
Well, I think by the time you leave here and get back here and take an hour.
Okay, I could probably be there too.
Okay. Laurie, how about you? Would you like us to try to move it to another date?
Move it either way.
Sometime, you know, maybe if you're not doing something.
We can take you out there separately.
Yeah, just I'll, he can take me out there and show, yeah, I had already made plans to go to Idaho next week, so.
That's fine. Carol's just so difficult to get in.
Yeah, she's so busy, yeah.
And she wants to bring along the grant writer for the Forest Service so we could get their perspective on grants because. They're really optimistic that there's a ton of money out there for this kind of project. And while we could move forward without spending a lot of money right away, the next step might be to, you know, get a good grant to pave it.
Yeah, yeah, that would be great.
All right, that was it. So we'll push three o'clock.
Well, I have, I.
Go ahead.
Well, Laurie was just asking me about putting you on the agenda. We have a ten o'clock next Friday.
That works for the fire issue.
We'll meet out there and then on.
Yeah, three o'clock at the east end of the airport. The Forest Service has got a road they use when they have that as a heli-tac base. And it's just a little dirt gravel entrance on the east side of the airport. We'll just all park right there and meet there at three. We'll go for a walk with Carol and show you what we have in mind.
Steve, how much time will you need on Friday for the fire?
An hour.
You know, half hour's plenty for what they want to do. If you need, if you wanna spend an hour, that's fine, but I think what they have to say is probably straight to the point.
Very good. I've got you in for a half hour.
At.
Ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock.
Okay.
Steve, a couple of quick unrelated questions.
Okay.
Just when I was getting in here earlier, that twin engine went over head and he's.
Nine works for me.
Is that anybody local?
Oh, I don't know. I didn't see him. I heard him.
There was a C one thirty that passed.
I know. I was out in the garden, he was like rooftop.
And yeah, he was low.
Whoa, that's cool.
And he was by Alberton a week ago as well. He was like right over the river and I thought he was gonna hit that mountain where the cell tower is by Tarkio and he banked. I thought, hey, you better pull up, but he banked around it.
He's a son, he's the son of a local resident here in Superior that will be unnamed.
Oh.
Because he's in the military. It's a military aircraft.
Right, from, must be from, does it come from Helena? Because that's where those C one thirty.
Great Falls.
Great Falls?
But anyway.
Another question was, was there a commercial jet out here?
Was that a spider jet?
A commercial jet?
Yeah, I forgot to ask, Data bought that, so you all saw it too.
I didn't.
Oh, you didn't. I was on my way home from work and I thought it was gonna hit the ball.
A twin engine yesterday, the fishing game was doing a flyover.
No, this was, this was like a jet.
Oh.
I'm not aware of jet. A jet, that's a very small runway for a jet to land. The Forest Service brings a Citation five hundred in, which is one of the older, small jets. And they've flown it in and out of here several times. But that must be a pretty courageous pilot with a light load. About the biggest thing that gets in here is a Pilatus, the PC twelves, and they're a turboprop aircraft. And the runway taxiways are limited to twelve thousand five hundred pounds, which is right at the limit of a Pilatus and a, and a King Air. So that's probably, if they're following the rules, that's the kind of aircraft.
Someone mentioned it during the week and saw it like they knew what they were looking at.
Yeah, I did, I heard it. Something fly over this morning under the weather. It's like, holy cow, that's tight. All right, we'll see you for ready at ten o'clock.
Okay, sounds good.
And we'll see you Thursday out there at the airport.
Right.
All right.
When's Jason coming in?
Eleven o'clock on the seventh of May. Um, Romans, that interview is at ten. You're gonna come in for that and then still go at three?
No, it's kind of a long day, isn't it?
It is.
Does he have, did you find a fill-in since we didn't answer your emails other than Laurie?
No, I was waiting to hear from you guys.
Oh.
I knew when you said that, like, oh.
Hang on, I wish that was a little bit sooner. Well, is, I guess she's still running, we still have more comment? Did you have more public comments or we're not?
Oh, no, it's rather just listening.
Oh, okay.
He's rocking.
Did you, were you able to sign in?
I signed in.
Oh, you did, okay. All right, I didn't know, I was just asking. Thank you.
Well, what's your other, I went and did the.
What else do you have? We've got bid opening and award and.
Or vice versa, whatever you want, Dwayne.
Request.
I would, I would be better off probably doing something in the morning than the later in the afternoon. I mean, I can make that one, but.
Okay, sure.
So that's at ten?
Yeah, ten o'clock. Dwayne's gonna do the interview, I'll do the hike.
And send me a reminder, ma'am.
I would be happy to do that.
Okay, well, we have our Mako, our, I guess there's no more public comment? Because I'm gonna, all right, we'll end that because we gotta. That's for Q, so she can.
Oh, okay.
We are one fifteen. It's the planning office, suggested solutions, Judy Stank.
Andy's in the field.
Okay, well, one of the reasons I called to get on your agenda is like my profession really counts on the planning office to get, you know, timely answers and, and things. And so it really holds up, you know, my contracts and, and the people that are buying things are. We always send them to talk to the horse's mouth and we don't try to give them advice or tax advice or anything like that, so. They really need to talk to someone like Andy. Plus, we also get a lot of information like sewer permits and DEQ approvals and things from that office. I mean, we don't, that's where they're at. That's where we have to get them. By the way, Missoula County has all those things online. So I guess one of the reasons I'm here is for, you know, the importance of that office to, to people that have to use it. Not only us, but, you know, contractors, surveyors, people. So if there's something that can be done, I don't know if Andy's sure to help. I know that Candace isn't here. I know that maybe, I talked to Andy about this and he said that he's, he's actually going to put for another person in his budget. So I guess one of the things I'm here to do is to support that, that person in his budget or, you know, any kind of suggestion that might help move his thing along. And I know Ron works in Sanders County and they do some things over there that might, might be, you know, good to try over here or might work over here, so.
Backing up, what did you say can be posted online? What were you referring to? What documents or?
So in Missoula County, like when I list something in Missoula County, I, I can go online and get the sewer permits and some of the information the county has. Like right now, realtors can go on First American website and we can get all of the plaits and covenants and things like that. So we don't have to bother the county. But they don't have like DEQ reports or anything like that. The county has that.
But they, but the things online that they have sewer permits, plaits, covenants?
Yeah, in Missoula County, yeah. Another thing they do, and I talked to Kellann about it, but I don't really care. I don't have that problem. But they have electronic recordings that, she said it wouldn't save her any time. Cause like if I close, and it's, I don't care, I always use the one here, but I know Missoula realtors will close in Missoula and they can't do it electronically. They gotta drive the deeds out here, take two days to mail them because you have to record that. Wait, the, the record deed, the one that everyone signed.
The RTD or whatever.
Yeah.
So what Sanders County does, I'll jump in here.
Yeah, would you, yeah.
Mineral County has all the plaits electronically. They could make that available online, just put them on a, a site on the Mineral County. Sanders County has it. You, you go onto the clerk and recorder's office and they have plaits. And, and you can look at the COSs and the subdivision plaits that have been recorded. The way Sanders County started it, me and Northwestern Energy paid somebody from Spokane to come in and scan all the plaits, put it on a CD. And then we had them come back every quarter and scan any new ones. And the county went, geez, if you don't mind, we can just stick that CD in our hard drive, download it and make it available for the public. And I said, you bet have at it. It cost us about seventy-five hundred bucks. But Mineral County has them available. Um, I have Candace about once a quarter send me any new subdivision plaits and COSs and then I have them on a database in my office so I can look at them. But I have to call her and have her send them to me. So that could be a really good service that the county could offer. And, and there just has to be an archive in the clerk and recorder's office computer network that people can access. The second thing that Sanders County did, and most counties have done it now, it's called IDOCs. And a company from outside the state of Montana will come into the clerk and recorder's office and, and they hook up a site where you can get all the deeds that have been recorded. And once, once the county started scanning deeds and then they recorded them, which was probably about two thousand for Mineral County. Those are all in the database in the clerk and recorder's office. So that IDOC thing is you contract with them. In, in Sanders County, I have to pay three hundred and fifty dollars a year. So that's not done by the county. IDOC does that service and provides for it. And then they charge the people that use that to, and I don't know if the county gets a kickback from that or what, but. So that's called IDOCs. And if you log on to IDOCs in the state of Montana, um, there's probably thirty counties that are using the IDOC service. And then you get into places like Missoula County and they have their own database network. And so if you, it's just like Montana Cadastro. If you click on a piece of property, you can pull up septic permits, you can pull up water rights, well logs, everything. So, but those counties have a staff that can do that. We have work within our means. So the IDOCs is a good one that I don't think it would cost Mineral County. You just, costs us, you know, three hundred and fifty dollars a year or whatever they're gonna charge. Plat maps, those should be available. Unfortunately, in, in Sanders County, when we record a plat, if it requires DEQ approval. We write the DEQ approval number on the plat at the clerk and recorder's office. They scan that DEQ approval and it goes into a miscellaneous document. And we can access those through the IDOC, same deal.
So IDOCs is better than Cadastro?
Say what?
Is it different or better than Cadastro?
The IDOCs?
Yeah.
It's just the deeds. You get the actual deeds for the properties. Anything that's recorded in the clerk and recorder's office on a daily basis, every single document is available through that IDOC. And, and it's, it's everything, plat maps, DEQ approvals, deeds, easements, you name it, it's all there. So that, that's a good site. And move anything else, that would be the cheapest thing Mineral County could do for those documents. I think the plat maps and COSs, that's a, that's a separate deal, but they're all scanned already. So those can just be put on a database and made available to the public.
I mean, because here's what's happened to, to me, like, when someone like, you can't, you can't talk to Andy. You have to make an appointment on the phone. And it can be like two weeks or even, I mean, I still haven't got the sewer permit, but I know Candace is gone. But I mean, it's like, that's just a long time. I mean, you have contracts and I. But I mean, it's like, that's just a long time. I mean, you have contracts and I, and I know things are like over busy for everybody. And yet we have to wait for things. I mean, it's not, and we try to plan our, our, our documents, our by cells, you know, with that in mind, like we're gonna need this long to do your due diligence. And you know, that might include talking to the planner, you know, finding out, what, you know, you might, it not, might not be septic approved, it might need a perk test or something, you know, and it's like, well then when you have, when you email and you have to wait two weeks just to talk to them for, sometimes it's like a two-minute question that you just need to answer. Like, it's just, it's, it just seems unreal that it has to be that way. I don't, I don't know, so, but.
One thing I think Andy does still is if somebody wants a septic permit, they come in, fill out the application with Andy and he does the site evaluation and does the permit. In Sanders County, we have licensed site evaluators that are just like the licensed installers in Mineral County. And the county just gives them a list of the licensed site evaluators. We do the site evaluation, fill out the complete permit and then just submit it to the county with the $200 fee. And I've done 50 permits in Sanders County this year. Sanders County has done over 150 permits since the beginning of the year. But that's a huge, if somebody comes into my office and wants a septic permit, I can have them a septic permit. If it's really urgent, I can have them on the next day. A week turnaround is average. I did nine permits last week.
And what does that require of you or any other respectors instead of the county?
Well, I go out and, I actually surveyed a lot, tie the corners, locate the house, locate the well. So I got an accurate lot layout. I do the soil profile. If it requires non-date calculations, I do the non-date calculations. If you don't have to do non-dates, you don't do them. It's a replacement system. You don't have to do non-dates. But pretty much County Santanion over there gets that permit from a licensed site evaluator. He looks at it, puts $200 in the bank and approves it. The county has been notified 72 hours notice, just like in Mineral County. If they put a drain filled in, somebody does, they have to give the county 72 hours notice. And the county can go out and inspect the, the site and that 72 hours before they can pass. And that's pretty much state line.
So what's the criteria of being a site evaluator?
They put on a class in, in Sanders County. Missoula County does it and we copied the exact same requirements as Missoula County. We got their study material from them. We had up to 20 people that were site evaluators in Sanders County and I think we're down to five or six.
So if you're say a septic installer, cause I know that we had, Andy had a class here, there was like, I don't know, 20 some people. So is that separate than the P, I mean?
It's two different licenses, cause I don't install systems. I'm just the evaluator.
So an installer can't be in a site and.
It could be both. You could be an installer and an evaluator.
But then you'd be evaluating your own.
Not, not necessarily. It's just like, I don't really, I don't put in systems.
But that's what I was wondering if, if say Dwayne Reynolds was to put in the septic system and he had an evaluator license too, could he put it in and then evaluate it?
That would probably be a conflict.
Well, that's what I was thinking. But, but I mean, if there's like 20 of them in here that are all installers, I mean, they could do each others or whatever.
I've only seen two in Sanders County that did both. I'm just too busy to put systems and I could do systems and I feel confident doing the site evaluation and the installing.
So it's just a class that you, that Andy had to put on to?
Together in Sanders County. So the installers and evaluators are all together. Let's communicate, let's make sure we're working together and making everything work.
Do you have to be an engineer to be a site evaluator then?
No.
Okay.
No.
I know I did some in your county and I never, I think the guy that owned the lot was an engineer and he just drew something up, sent it in here. Your guy is out there at Donlin and, cause they're, you know, they were approved.
It, it's pretty hard for the average person. We had a lot of just people that took the class and passed it and did it. That if you don't have survey equipment to do the, the site map and, and know what property corners are, because anymore, there's a well protection zone around wells that's a hundred foot. If it goes onto a neighbor's parcel, you have to have an easement for that. And, and so if you don't know where the property lines are and you start putting drain fields on properties, I, I had Tim, when he was approving, I'm put a drain field entirely in the highway right away on a piece of property. Just misjudged where the right way was at. I, I could see it from the interstate and went, oh.
Doesn't it have to be so far from the property line too, or?
Well, there's a mixing zone on the drain field that's a hundred foot long and if that goes off your property, you have to have an easement. So there, there could be a hundred foot setback, depending on which way the mixing zone goes. So I think Andy could save a lot of time if he, there was a program like that and he wasn't trying to do those. Cause he's probably charging about $200 to do an evaluation and that's what the permit is in Sanders County. That goes to the county, the site evaluator charges separate from that. There's no way Andy can go out and do that for $200. And if that's, that would take him six hours to do a good site evaluation, he can't. You know, if he's doing five a week, that's all he would be doing for, there's no time for anything else.
He's drowning in his own work.
So, so in Sanders County, $200 for the permit and then?
And we do well permits too.
And then the developer pays an additional amount of money for the site evaluator, whoever that is, you or somebody else?
I charge $750. I've been charged in the same price. That's for standard. I mean, there can be, when I have to design a pressure dose system or put in an EBT a bed or something like that, it can go all over the place. But I've been charged in the same price since 1996. Other people tried to start it at 150, 250 and they all went out of business real quick.
So how's that work Ron on the newer subdivisions where the site is already approved?
Then you just, you just use that layout from the subdivision. That's the DEQ approval. When you have a DEQ approval, you just take that in with the permit and then you pay $100 instead of $200, cause it's already been reviewed.
Does he go look at those too, or what?
You have that option and that's what the $100 is for, is so that when they call him and say, hey, we've got the system in, you can come look at it. He's got 72 hours. That $100 is to cover that inspection of the building if he chooses to go out.
Because the, the septic installer should be able to look at that, right?
Oh yeah, it's got all the details, how many millennial feet of drain filled, where it has to go, with an accurate lot layout. So that's all been done. I, and that's the thing, when I do a subdivision, I do it for each individual lot with the subdivision.
And we don't have well permits here. I mean, it tells you, well, you know.
We charge $50 for a well permit in Sanders County and we did it because the well drillers come out and will drill the, the Dane well right where the drain field was approved at. And then you have to move everything out of every parcel.
Which wouldn't be a bad for Mineral, which wouldn't be a bad idea for, for Mineral County. One, it's another source of revenue. Two, it's a good idea to make sure that that doesn't happen.
It, it is really expensive to start trying to find a new site for a drain field on the lot when the well was on the spot. And who's gonna abandon the well that just costs $54 a millennial foot to drill it? And nobody wants to do that. So then you're trying to move a drain field and very often, you know, if you got parcels that are one to five acres, there's usually a site that works for the drain field. And you got quite a few sites that'll work for the well and you can build a house almost anywhere on that parcel. But the drain field site is most, that's what I do my subdivisions around. First I go out and find where I could put legal drain fields at and then I start counting how many lots I can get. And then I put it in the lot lines. So when somebody drills a well in the middle of a drain field site, it's, it's a disaster for us. And we all try to fix it. I don't know how many of them I've tried to help and fix that I don't get any reimbursement for it. It's just you're bankrupt working on that stuff, trying to fix it. So as much as I hate permitting and everything else, well permits, $50 a piece, what the well driller gets is a copy of the approved layout and they're told if you don't drill it in the right spot, you're responsible for it, not everybody else. And all of a sudden the wells are going in the right spots.
It does cause a lot of problems later if they're not right. I mean, it's just from selling stuff and having to disclose things or move things or, yeah, it's.
Drain fields are running, you know, $8,000 for a standard drain field installed. So if you have to move something like that, it's really expensive. So when you start looking at some of this other stuff, it's pretty cheap.
Well, we realized there's a lot of building going on, a lot of boom, wasn't anticipated. I did look into, you know, if we could somehow make it be the cause of COVID and get extra money to do something. And they told me, no, it's not COVID approved because they said, they used the example of Gallatin County. So previous to COVID, Gallatin County started exploding and that's just how things happen sometimes in Montana. But we do recognize that we're gonna have to do something to improve Andy's office and, so.
I think it is because of COVID. That's too bad because.
It's a big part of it.
Because people that came here.
Are escaping.
And they can work from home, so they're moving here. Well, COVID made every people realize that.
I think the word just snuck out, escaped.
Yeah.
Snuck out, escaping. People are escaping and they're coming here.
Yeah.
And Mineral County, I think, needs to seize that revenue, the tax revenue. It's a good opportunity for Mineral, Mineral County to grow. And we don't need anything impeding that. And it's, it's, it's easy enough, I think, to streamline it. I think Andy just needs some help.
So is there any word on Candace when she'll be back?
No, in fact, we're gonna probably be doing some in-house transition. There's somebody that used to work for a title company that works at the courthouse that might be able to sit in for Candace while she's out. And then, and then like I said, we're talking about it this budget year, adding possibly a staff member to the office.
But Mrs. Reynolds, she used to work in that office for about five or six years.
Who's that?
Dwayne Reynolds.
Yeah, she did.
And she was good. She, she had it down about as good as Candace does. And for whatever reason she left, she might come back temporary, just till Candace can come back. She probably wouldn't want a full-time job doing that bit. She already knows the office, she already knows the indexing, she already knows the procedure. So that, that would be what, if I was the employer, I would be looking after her right now. I'd be going after her. You do need somebody, cause Candace is the one that gives us the septic permits. You know, and when I, when somebody calls me and wants a septic permit or something done on their parcel, I have to pull the permits on the adjoining parcels. And that office is the only place I can get that from. So, and Candace was the one that got me that stuff and she was the one that answered the phone. So
she was.
Right now, we're dead in the water.
Yeah, cause every time we miss something, we have to have a septic permit, we have to have. And the fact that when you try to, you know, Andy needs to be available to people. They have questions that we just can't answer. We're not gonna be liable for answering those, those questions about properties and sanitation as, as a realtor. Like he has to do it.
Whose phone can be transferred yourself?
We don't get legal advice.
Like if he's out in the field or whatever?
Most, it's, it's bad, cause when people start asking those questions, he's gotta be kinda sitting at his computer so he can pull that stuff up or pulling the file out on the property. That's what I do in my office.
I know he's, you know, out in the field all the time, cause I've stopped him to, you know, chit chat with him too and he's just, just so busy though. Yeah, no, I agree that he needs help and.
Hopefully, yeah. I just, I mean, we rely on people we call on, we call other.
Yeah, but it wasn't for Ron.
I mean, I mean, they should, for questions like that, he should be able to answer. But we send people to talk to them, that really it's something they need to know about from the county's perspective. Cause that's where they're gonna have to come and that's who they're gonna have to deal with when they actually own the property, so.
It's slow. I, I sent in an application for a subdivision a month ago. And at the beginning of this week, I got an email from Andy that we can do the pre-application meeting on the 19th of May. That's eight weeks for a pre-subdivision application, for a two lot minor subdivision.
My brother's still working on a septic system for years now.
Application is probably before this, this stuff starts.
Well, I had one, they told me more than a month ago, it should be filed in a month. I haven't heard of it. So that Elk, Elk Run. I guess you okay to guarantee so they can file it early? In St. Regis?
All the names I forget. You remember that one, Dwayne?
Yeah, I know where Elk Run is.
Yeah. And then, of course, now, one where Dwayne wants to live, we're waiting for. Some more, but we're ready. I mean, it's, everybody's agreed to stuff. So I mean, it really is putting a stop to like, there's, like, people are trying to put a house in, they have wells coming. I mean, like well, the well drillers, if you don't take them when you can get them, it could be six months. These are contractors that wanna put a house in, you know, or. So, I mean, his office needs to be able to go through those. Like, I think they have timelines and stuff, so.
Are we gonna, when, is that next week we're addressing the, in-house transfer?
Right.
Well, hopefully next week we'll have a plan for someone taking Candace's spot till she can return. Baby steps, I know. And then we'll move on to the.
But he, I think you need some kind of, whatever he does, like, I don't know if you separate the planning and the sanitation or something, but.
I think the idea of, of having something like what Ron suggested with somebody that goes out and does the site evaluations or I don't think it would be that difficult. I think maybe the, the fees themselves might even pay for it.
Yeah, but we'll talk.
It certainly would streamline the process. Take a lot of, take a lot of weight off of his shoulders so he can go on and do bigger, better things. I mean, it's something that should be considered anyway, in my opinion.
Uh, extra, is, is this the reappraisal year or was that, when was that? It's every two years.
Yes, every two years. I can't remember which year is on and which year is off, but.
Cause I, I'm gonna say people's property values are gonna go up and of course we're gonna be in shock when we get our tax bill and.
Well, and what I'm hoping Judy is that the Department of Non-Revenue, as I call them, starts catching all these bills. They have been so slow, so slow to add them to our tax rolls.
Oh yeah, you had quite a few last year. They never.
They never, never got at, I mean, and there's been an example in Sanders County for years. I think we even had one here where somebody is trying to come down and pay their taxes and it's been like year two or three. And they wanna pay him so they don't get a big old catch-up bill eventually. And it's still $52 a year for the little parcel of land. They go, no, we have a house on it. We, we know it's more than $52. So, but that's what the state did. They tried to cut the budget and they cut revenue. Of course, you know, they need that. St. Regis and now somebody in Hamilton works remotely to cover Mineral County and they don't, like you talk about communication with the builders and the, they don't know what's going on out here.
Oh, I know. And they're not, they're not catching a lot of the new ones. I, I just had that red brick house over there. They were, it was a nonprofit, so it wasn't getting taxed. So now someone's buying it, the property tax is gonna be like $3,000. I go, that can't be right. And I told, I argued with him on the email and said, well, you need to send an onsite person to come look at that house, because those people shouldn't be paying that big of a tax bill. So he said he would, but that, they don't, that's something, I don't know. The legislature needed to fix. I think they need those tax, they, they're, under the, the state thinks everybody can work remotely now and it's, it's not.
I know it's been brought up.
It's not serving the people. I mean, they're, they're supposed to be working for us, not, you know.
You know, well, at Midwinter Conference, we had Department of Revenue, they're the new director of whatever. And I mean, Roman addressed it saying, you know, when you took our person away from here, then it affects all the counties.
And it's kind of ironic because, well, you know, there's two methods of taxation, income tax in Montana and the state keeps that. Property tax in Montana, they collect it for us and give it back to the counties and schools. Well, here they are cutting our revenue offices, which they don't seem to mind because they're not the ones hurting without the money, cause it's our money.
Right.
And then people think that we're the ones setting the taxes, cause it says Mineral County Treasurer, but the state is the one setting the taxes. But they have it go mailed out on our letterhead.
Exactly. And they're, you know what, the, about, oh, it was about four months ago, I had a manufacturer. Exactly. And they're, you know what, the, about, oh, it was about four months ago, I had a manufactured home that I literally needed the county records from the old record cards to prove that it was only moved once. And literally, so those records are in Sanders County now. I couldn't come here to look at them. And you used to be able to go down, get them out, take a picture. Anyway, so I had to call the Department of Revenue, that Zach guy over there, and it took him, oh, it took him a week. Well, I think it was with me and you to go down and to look at it, to find it and send us a copy.
Were you, were you a commissioner Judy when the state took away our county assessor and moved it to the state?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I know, I think we should get county assessors back.
So, so, yeah, but they do these things and then they don't, yeah, then they don't help us. I mean, it was their idea.
Yeah, cause basically they were dictating everything that person had to do anyways.
Right.
Seemed good at the time, but, yeah.
I think a couple of years ago Sanders County had, they figured eight hundred and fifty homes were being taxed.
Really?
And they, they're supposed to be under two hundred now, but, so Zach's busy over there. He's not helping you guys.
Yeah. That's cause of you, you're calling them every day, probably.
Well, of course we're on Zoom, but for a while we had an assessor that like, he drank a lot and he never went out and assessed. And the car never moved. Then we added, I mean, there was, you'd list something and it would just be bare land. Nobody assessed it, like a lot. But it was nice. You could go in and give it to Lois and they'd go figure it out right there. Can't, that doesn't happen now. I find all sorts of mistakes that they make, but.
Well, we'll let Andy know about our discussion today and.
I told him we were coming and we were gonna be discussing that and he said he was gonna put something in his budget, so.
And I didn't know anything that Ron talked about, about having somebody else help do the site evaluations. That's good to know.
Yeah, and the IDOCs and getting some of those documents online. Some of them are, they're already there. We just have to be able to access through the clerk and recorders.
Right.
The deeds are all scanned, you know, it only goes back to two thousand. I think Mineral County goes back a little bit farther than Sanders County does actually, but, so from about two thousand to current, that's huge.
Yeah.
When you research in records, it's, and, and if that IDOC, you know, and you can call Sanders County, the clerk and recorder over there, she can tell you how she started it. Nicole Scribner started that in Sanders County, so. But my sister bought a house in Jefferson County and last month I got on IDOCs in Jefferson County. It was fifteen dollars just to log on for a day and I could access all the records I wanted unlimited for one day. If I wanted a week, it was thirty-five dollars or something like that. So there's all kinds of options and when you hit IDOC, it just comes up with every county in the state that's participating. That's a lot.
How many are now? About thirty, you say?
Thirty at least, yeah. And, and the bigger counties don't need it, because they have their own.
Their own system.
Departments.
Okay, yeah.
I'll let you know.
There are resources out there.
Well, and that is, that just saves a couple of phone calls that would go through Candace, cause I call Candace when I need a plat now. You know, and so that ties up her time. Every time somebody calls her, it's, it's a delay.
What about the rest of you guys?
Well, I'm here, I'm here to just second everything Judy said. I've been, I've been experienced the same thing exactly in our real estate business, so, yeah.
Mr. Mangle, what are you, are you part of the Diggers Association?
I never see Ron. I never see him much anymore. And Dwayne, you know. You at a funeral.
Yeah, I've been out of ditch lately.
We were in Scobie the last time we ran into each other.
You still have a backhoe or machine?
Yeah, I'm still paid my dues to still be licensed installer, you know, so. Sounds like I ought to be a site evaluator, but no. I don't, I don't even wanna be the installer anymore.
How did, where did they take the class? They bring him like to Sanders County?
Sean puts a class on.
Oh, Sean Roland does?
And put one on for installers.
Yeah, Andy just did one for installers.
Couple months ago.
Oh, okay.
Did you go to that one that Andy put on? There was like.
This last one?
Yeah, there was like fourteen installers.
Yeah, there was quite a few there.
Probably more than that.
Yeah.
There was a good group.
I would say at least twenty or something, cause I walked in and.
So site class would be, site evaluator class would be kind of comparable?
It's similar. They give you a manual that you have to study with all the regulations in it. And of course, me being a survey area, it's, that's what I did, you know, but I still took the class and got licensed through the county, just so I'd be part of the program. And they do an upgrade every, every year. You get eight hours of continuing ed. And that was a class I just had a couple of weeks ago here for the installers. And, but yeah, Sanders County just copied what, and, and it's, it's kinda easy because all you would have to do is get with Sean Sorensen at Sanders County and say, hey, next time you do an installer class, we want anybody that wants to do it in Mineral County to be able to participate in that. Sean says, sure, have them come to the class.
An installer class or a site evaluation class?
Either one.
Oh, you got, Sean does?
Yeah, and you could just share, the two counties could co-op, have that class together, you know, and and, and then like Dwayne Reynolds is licensed to do it in Sanders County or Mineral County. So he's, you know, and then if, if he's licensed over here, Sean recognizes that license in Sanders County, so if he comes over. So, you know, if I'm licensed in Sanders County, Andy could set that up and just have it so that we're licensed in Mineral County too. If somebody wants to install a system in Sanders County and they're from Calistir or Flathead, all the, all we do in Sanders County is check to see if they have a front license in the county they're from and then they can come put a system in Sanders County.
So is Andy like up in the office at all then?
Cause he, he hangs out in that downstairs.
Yeah, his, his office.
Maps were in there.
Oh, so getting Ema, septic, DEQ stuff right now is gonna be impossible. I think some stuff I can get from Killahan. DEQ stuff, I think, in that office, but.
Yeah, so Candace, when she's here, if you go in there, she got to rearrange that, her, her office now. That upstairs one is.
Oh, it looks good.
She, yeah, she has more room.
Yeah.
All right, well.
Well, I hope there's something you can do to speed it up, cause it really, uh, it's, uh, causes a lot of.
Yeah.
delays. Then it trickles down.
Yep.
To the contractors and everybody that's trying to do building and, yeah, well, appreciate it.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll see what we can do. All right, well.